$2,500. About a month later, somebody registered to run against me as a third-party candidate. I actually called Citizens Election Fund and said, "Please don't send me the extra money." Because you see, under our law, as soon as that third-party minority-party candidate filed, I got wired immediately another $7,500. So now I had... A lot of dough. I'm giving back $7,500 of it. What is that, 20... Carry the zero... 20 grand? When things are going to get really bad, really soon, are we going to say, "Sorry, sorry, we can't fund that program," or "Sorry, we have to raise your taxes because we want you to pay $40 million, $60 million, $80 million for our bumper stickers and buttons?" I got a feeling, folks, that's not going to fly too well. But in deference to the policy debate which we've had in this chamber, what this amendment does is not change any of that. It still provides for public campaign financing. It still provides an equal playing field for political opponents. But what it does is save money, not just for this fiscal year alone, as the underlying bill does by just taking $5 million. Yes, Representative Merrill is correct. In this fiscal year, it only saved $7.5 million, maybe a couple of million more than we're getting from the surplus we're taking. But what it does is puts into place a change in the grant structure so that each successive year, when God knows we are going to need it, we'll be saving more and more money. Representative Merrill said we had a success by every account. Maybe it was. Depends on who you talk to. But I'll tell you one thing, whether Democrat or Republican, there was a lot of people I talked to that were not up to speed about the system. And I don't know if you had the same experience I did. But when I told them that the public was financing my campaign to the tune of $15,000 in my case of taxpayers' money, whether you wanted to vote for me or not, they weren't thrilled with that idea. They're going to probably be less thrilled with that idea if, in order to perpetuate the idea, we have to raise taxes or cut services because of the financial situation we're in. Before we get into the policy that can be debated in the next legislative session, let's make this change now. It is the least painful, least we could do. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
If not, Staff, yes, please come to the White House. Members, take your seats, and the machine will be open.
The House of Representatives is voting by roll call. Members to the chamber, the House is voting. House amendments, Schedule A, by roll call. Members to the chamber, please.
Have all the members voted. Have all the members voted. If all the members have voted, please check the board and make sure your vote has been properly cast. If all the members have voted, the machine will be locked, and the clerk will take a tally. Clerk, please announce tally.
On House amendments, Schedule A, for House Bill Number 7601. Total number of voting, 141 necessary for passage, 71 those voting, 843 those on day night, 71 have voted.
The amendment fails. Care to mark further on Bill 4? Representative Minor.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, as I had said earlier, I don't believe the action that we are attempting to take here tonight really does go far enough. It's clear to me that we need to make larger, more significant budget decisions. The public expects us to make decisions. And therefore, Mr. Speaker, I have an amendment which I would like to call LCO 7069, and I'd be allowed to summarize. Early retirement.
Representative Minor, we have not in possession of the amendment, sir, so I'll ask the chamber to stand at ease. Chamber, come back to order. Clerk, please call LCO Number 7069, which will be designated House Amendment Schedule B.
LCO Number 7069, House be offered by Representatives Cafero, Hamsey, and Claritas.
Representative, please leave the chamber to summarize the amendment. Is there objection on summarization? If not, sir, you may summarize.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, what this amendment proposes to do is to actually save the state of Connecticut for FY '09 $67.2 million, and then proposes to save again $78.9 in FY '10. In addition to that, there'll be savings within agencies of $6.7 million FY '09 and $11.2 million FY '10. I've got to be careful with the billions and millions. Mr. Speaker, the first part of the section actually talks about who would be eligible and the dates upon which the plan would be offered. Section B would be the effective date of the retirement. Section C goes on to add what the proposal is, adding up to three years of service or three years of age. Section D lays out the restrictions. Section E outlines the payment for unused sick and vacation days. And I move adoption.
Question on the chamber's adoption, Schedule A. Will you remark on the amendment? Will you remark?
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, this is not new. The state of Connecticut has offered an early-retirement package before. It was very effective for the state of Connecticut to deal with some of its fiscal circumstances. It allowed us to reorganize different departments on a go-forward basis. It would again, at the end of a year or two, allow us to consider things like refill rates. It would allow us to consider whether we want any other reorganizations within the state of Connecticut in an effort to try and achieve efficiencies. Mr. Speaker, we have a growing problem in the state of Connecticut, and that is our expenditures. Our expenditures are exceeding our revenues. As I said earlier this evening, I do believe that the state of Connecticut's taxpayers expect us to do something significant and something different. And, Mr. Speaker, I would ask that when the vote be taken on this bill, that it be taken by roll call, please.
Question on roll call vote. All those who favor roll call vote, please say what you think, aye. Option has been met. When the vote is taken, it will be taken by roll. Care to mark further on the amendment? Representative Merrill.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Well, yes, this does look very familiar. And as someone who has an awful lot of state employees in my district, I'm particularly interested in this program, but I would respectfully rise in opposition to this amendment. You know, we could go into detail about exactly how many people would be eligible and how these numbers were arrived at, but I think if anyone looks at the fiscal note on this bill, you will notice that, yes, there is a savings in '09 of $67 million, but the key paragraph is at the end when it says that "an early-retirement program increases the state's long-term liabilities, which will be calculated by the consulting I was here when we did the last early-retirement program, and I remember that after we did the program, we did hire back an awful lot of the people who took the early-retirement. We needed to because the state workforce was quite reduced by the last early-retirement program. And we never seemed to go back and really calculate exactly how much we saved versus how much it cost us in the long term. But the report that I remember seeing not too long ago did calculate that in the long term, at best, it's a wash; at worst, it severely increases our long-term liability, which isn't difficult to see from this. I don't think they've actually calculated it in this fiscal note because it's a little tricky, but I think this is something we might consider at some point. I would hate to do that because I would oppose an early-retirement program. It usually means that the state workforce, which actually still hasn't recovered from the last early-retirement program, several of our agencies still have fewer personnel than they did before the last early-retirement program. And I happen to know, for example, in higher education, we lost a number of faculty that have never been replaced, and we still now are below the number of faculty we had when the university was about two-thirds its size today. So those are the kinds of impacts that I think you'd see. I don't dispute that we have a large fiscal problem next year, but this is probably not the way to solve it, even in the short term, because I think in the end, we create a tremendous out-year liability for the state. Many of these people would be eligible for retirement in any event, and I suspect the problem we're going to have in the next few years is that too many of our state workforce are going to be of retirement age and retiring, and we may not be able to replace them even without the early-retirement program. So I would urge my colleagues to vote against this amendment at this time. Thank you.
Representative Minor.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I don't disagree with the lady that this is a significant thing for us to be considering. The issue that I have is that we're not really considering anything significant thus far. We're going to go another three, four, five months before we make any meaningful changes to the way we do business here in the state of Connecticut. The $300, $500, $600 million deficit that we're currently talking about is going to continue to grow. If not this, what? That's what... I think that's what we're trying to ask here tonight. If this proposal isn't going to be adopted, which proposal will be adopted? We came here today to try and mitigate a deficit that grows as we sit here. I don't disagree that this is a first step of a lot of changes that need to happen, but this proposes to save us $67 million in this fiscal year. Ladies and gentlemen, I would ask you to support this, not because it's the answer, but because it's part of the answer. Because it gives us the initiative to take a look at the way we do things, the agencies that we have, the departments that we have, and perhaps, as Representative Merrill said, we need to consider how we're going to rehire people back. What better way to do it than to offer people incentives to leave those positions, and then we're filling a vacancy? Imagine trying to let somebody go because of reorganization. So I think everything that she outlined is a reason to support this amendment, ladies and gentlemen. I would urge you to do so.
Care to mark further? Representative Hamsey.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, I'm a little concerned. I'm a little concerned because I'm not sure that we fully appreciate what we are going to be dealing with in the next two fiscal years. And I'm not sure that we fully understand that changes that we make to save the state money earlier in the fiscal year have more impact than changes that we make as we get deeper and deeper into the fiscal year. If you might remember, this is a proposal that we offered in the last regular session. At that time, OFA estimated that the savings would be $163 million in this current fiscal year. Because we're proposing it now, later or deeper into the fiscal year, those savings are now reduced to $67 million. I can't think of any other item that's in the package before us that will make structural changes to make our decisions easier in the next fiscal year. This is one of those proposals, and I would urge the members of this chamber to vote for it.
Care to mark further? Almost Senator Bouchette.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, I also rise to support this amendment. In the last few months, I've had a chance not only to listen closely to members of my own community, but to many communities surrounding mine, and listen to the stories that they had, and to listen to individuals that had just lost their jobs. And some of them weren't just losing their jobs in a company that was ongoing, but some of these companies were at risk to no longer being there. When that is the case, then there are no pension funds to go back to, there are no severance packages. There truly is a great deal of fear and pain right now being experienced by everyone. I support this amendment because it is one way to actually address the long-term costs of our state and a state government that is considered by many to be quite large for the size of our... for our particular population. And in fact, many say we have more state government workers per capita than almost any other one of our 50 states. By going this direction now, we will be saving costs down the long term rather than keeping intrinsically high costs moving forward. As everyone says, the other items on our plate here are just low-hanging fruit. In fact, some of these are not low-hanging fruit. They're basically fruit that is already on the ground. We have to make some serious cuts. This is one way to do it, and it's certainly better than the experiences many of us have had when people have actually had to be laid off, which means they did not have a job at all. They did not have benefits. They did not have health care when they were actually let go. This is a situation where you can actually allow individuals that voluntarily want to be retired and will have benefits and will have health care. It's a much more compassionate direction to go, and we should be doing it and considering it now, earlier than the process. In fact, some have already stated that we may be already too late in the process. For these reasons, I think it's a very important amendment to consider, and I hope people will give it some consideration and vote aye at this time. Thank you.
Care to mark further? Representative Cafero.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. $6.6 billion, folks. If anyone here believes we are going to close that gap and not reduce our state workforce, you're dreaming. There's two ways to reduce your state workforce. You either let them retire, or you lay them off. We've been down that road before. We've seen the effects of people in the private sector being laid off, and it ain't fun. If we have an option now to offer our state employees a way to leave and reduce our state workforce and leave with a pension without being laid off, we owe it to them, and we owe it to the citizens to do it that way. Let's vote for this amendment.
Will you mark further? If not... No. If not, Staff gets in the White House. Members, take your seat, and the machine will be open.
The House of Representatives is voting by roll call. Members to the chamber, members to the chamber. The House is voting. House amendments, Schedule B, by roll call.
Have all the members voted. Have all the members voted. All the members voted, please check the board and make sure your vote has been properly cast. If all the members have voted, the machine will be locked, and the clerk will take a tally. Clerk, please announce a tally.
On House Amendment Schedule B for Bill 7601. Total number of voting, 140 necessary for adoption, 71 those voting, 843 those voting, 96 abstinent, voting 11.
Amendment fails. Care to mark further on Bill 4? Representative Claritas.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I have stood here today, listening to my colleagues on both sides of the aisle discuss the situation we are in as a state and as a nation. I was fortunate enough before the election to go on a tour of a business in my district, and as we were talking to the business owner, he was explaining to us the measures he has taken to help him in his business during this tough economic time. And one of the things he had done was he had shortened his work week to four days, and he shortened the days, the hours in the day. Another thing that was interesting was he has a catalog of all his parts. It was a manufacturing business. And what he did was he consolidated that catalog by half because he felt he could get the information out he needed while saving himself money and therefore allowing his employees to keep working and, most importantly, staying in business. Because the issue was not whether he could make more or less money, but whether he could keep his doors open or not. And the most important part of that story, and I'm sure every one of us in this chamber has a similar story for people they know or businesses in their district, but the most important part of that is whether you're an individual, a business, or state government, people have to cut, and they have to clean up their own house, which is just as important for us to do. And part of cleaning up is becoming more efficient. It's not just about cutting. It's about cutting things that aren't necessary and making the things that are there work more efficiently. Mr. Speaker, for those reasons, the clerk is in possession of LCO 7068. I ask that he please call, and I'd be allowed to summarize.
Clerk, please call LCO Number 7068. Will be designated House Amendment Schedule C.
LCO Number 7068, House C, offered by Representatives Cafero, Hamsey, and Claritas.
The chamber to summarize the amendment. Is there objection on summarization? If not, madam, you may proceed. Representative Claritas.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. What this amendment does is it consolidates the six commissions that we presently have into one. It does not eliminate any commissions. What it does is consolidate them, as we spoke about, as I spoke about previously in relation to the business in my district. Consolidates them into one, allowing each commission to have two members under the auspices of the main umbrella commission. It also, in the spirit of asking everyone in this state and this country to make cuts and be more efficient, it asks the legislature to double their co-pays on their prescriptions and their medical visits. And thirdly, it will cut sessional employees by two-thirds. Mr. Speaker, I move adoption.
Question on the chamber's adoption, a House Amendment Schedule C. Will you remark on the amendment? Will you remark?
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. As we talked about before, this is not cutting any of the commissions out. It is consolidating them to one. Presently, we have a Commission on Children, Commission on Aging, Permanent Commission on the Status of Women, Latino and Puerto Rican Affairs Commission, African-American Affairs Commission, and the Asian Pacific American Affairs Commission. What this will do is put those all into one. It will be called the Commission on Minority and Protected Class Citizens. We'll have one executive director, and each one of those commissions will have two staff members. This will end up saving us $1.3 million in FY '09 and $2.66 million each year after. As far as our co-pays for the legislative branch, I know nobody's too thrilled about that, but the reality is, as I said, we're asking everybody else to cut in this state. We need to take the cuts ourselves. That cut will save us $100,000 in this year and $200,000 each year after. Lastly, sessional legislative staff, this is all about becoming more efficient and working, getting the work done with what we have. This will have a savings of approximately $1.5 million this year. Mr. Speaker, I ask when the vote be taken, it be taken by roll.
Question on the chamber's on a roll call vote. All those who favor roll call vote, please signify by saying aye. Option has been met. When the vote is taken, it will be taken by rolls. Care to mark further on the amendment? Representative Merrill.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. I'm looking at this amendment for the first time and appreciate the effort to mitigate the deficit. However, I would speak in opposition to the amendment, not because these may not be potentially good ideas. good ideas. In terms of agency consolidation, I think we'll probably have a lot of those discussions next year, but the way the process works is that the governor has to come up with a budget that we react to. They're working hard on it, I know, right this moment, and I understand there will be some agency consolidation proposals in the budget, but we don't know yet. Again, that is part of the hearing process that we'll go through during the next budget. And I would say, on the legislative management side, and the idea that we might contribute a portion of our legislative benefit to the deficit mitigation, for one thing, in our plan tonight, we already have stepped up and taken some savings from legislative management that we offered up as part of our plan, including a change in the travel allowance, a change in the mileage allowance that we will begin on December 1st, having a slightly smaller mileage allowance for the General Assembly, and some other cuts to legislative management. So we have already tried to make some changes in our own operation, as well as a proposal to go paperless in the chamber, something some of us have been talking about for a while. There are ways we can achieve those savings, but in terms of the actual savings to the co-pays on our medical premiums and co-pays, that is part of a collective bargaining process, and I don't believe we can, through an amendment process, assume that savings. I see that it looks like the language assumes that there will be some negotiation under collective bargaining to achieve this savings, and so it says, notwithstanding any provision of the general statutes, "The State of Connecticut shall enter into collective bargaining negotiations with applicable designated employee organizations in order to increase by 100% the co-payments for prescription drugs and other benefits." That obviously assumes that that would be a successful negotiation, but certainly is nothing that we can assume here tonight. So while some of these ideas may have merit in the upcoming session for the coming biennium, I don't think the timing, again, is right for these kinds of major policy changes tonight. So I would speak in opposition to the amendment and encourage my colleagues to vote no. Thank you.
Can I mark further? Representative O'Neal. Oh, I'm sorry, Representative Claritas?
What, am I invisible? Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Never, never in my, never would I think you, Representative Claritas, would be invisible.
Well, thank you, Mr. Speaker. To address the Chairman of the Appropriations Committee, although I do agree that we have, we had made an effort to make some changes here, clearly, as our House Republican Leader has mentioned, this is a big one. We have a big problem. One or two or 10 things is not going to make this go away. Everything we can do will help, and we're going to have to do everything. Just to address the, our insurance issue, appropriations chair is correct. We cannot make those decisions unilaterally. What we are asking is the state go into negotiations with the State Employee Benefits Union to possibly allow us to be separate from the union part of this agreement. As I said, Mr. Speaker, this is not the answer. If we can come up with 20 different solutions today, we'll still have hundreds more solutions to find. We have to start somewhere, and we have to continue going. We can't say, "It's not time now. Let's look when we go into session." We should have done this, actually, in March. We should have started doing this in March when we knew there was a big problem coming, and we didn't. We keep putting it off and putting it off. I urge my colleagues to vote for this amendment. Thank you.
Can I mark further? Representative Heatherington?
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I understood we were coming here today to address the matter of the budget deficit projected, and the analysis that I see of the core bill here tonight reduces the deficit to around $320 million. What do we do about the $320 million? And that is a figure that grows every day, as this is not static. We are talking about putting this off to consider next year, when we'll go into it further in committees. We have a crisis on our hands. We have a crisis on our hands. We still have $300 million and climbing just for this fiscal year, and we have just rejected a series of amendments that, by rough calculation, would have saved us $100 million. Now, that's not the answer. That's not the whole answer, but what I'm yet to hear is, what's the plan? What are we going to do about this deficit as it grows towards multiple billions of dollars? If someone has a secret plan which relieves our anxiety, I wish that person would share it with the rest of us, because I see a growing, growing deficit and no measurable ways to address it. And it is critical, as has been pointed out before, to do this as early as possible. You know, if you're on a ship, and you're on a course, and you're trying to go to Point A, and you find that, in fact, you were heading for Point B, the sooner you make the course correction, the smaller course correction you'll have to make. The more, the more we delay, the more we'll have to make very radical changes in a crisis, in enhanced crisis atmosphere, and may result in changes that are not welcome. So I would respectfully urge that the sense of the day and the realism that we confront dispose us to begin to address it by adopting some of these measures that have been proposed, and in particular, the one that has just been proposed before us. And so, Mr. Speaker, I would respectfully urge my colleagues to support this amendment. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Representative Minor?
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, I rise and support-
We're disturbing you, were we, sir? We were-
Excuse me?
We weren't disturbing you, were we, sir?
No, not at all. No, no. I was getting educated, Mr. Speaker.
Very good, sir.
That was close, though, huh? Mr. Speaker, actually, I do rise to support this amendment. I think it goes a long way towards trying to deal with some of the issues before us. We need to lead. We need to set an example, Mr. Speaker. How can we expect people to take a cut in benefits if we're not willing to send the message that we want to do it ourselves? I don't know about you, but when I walk around and people talk to me about health care, one of the things they point out is, "What's your co-pay? How much do you have to pay for prescription drugs?" People in our districts are laying out $50, $80, $100 per prescription while we're laying out three. This is not an insignificant step, but it's the right step for us to be taking. And in Section 503, Mr. Speaker, unless I miss my guess, we're not going to be back here again before we start hiring these employees. We are not going to be back here before these employees are hired. So we might as well just face the fact, ladies and gentlemen, that we're the only place in the country that's losing money by the hundreds of millions a month, and we're going to add staff. So if for no other reason than that, this amendment should be supported, and I would urge that we do support it. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you, sir. Representative O'Neal?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Speaker. If I may, a few questions through you to the Chair of the Appropriations Committee.
Please frame your question, sir. Representative Merrill? Representative Merrill, please be prepared to answer a question, Madam. Representative O'Neal, you may proceed, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Speaker. In the conversation that occurred earlier, the Chair of the Appropriations Committee indicated that one of the reasons for voting against the amendment was that we were going to await the governor's budget that she was going to propose in February. And with respect to the portion of the amendment that deals with things that affect the legislature, it had been my impression that the governor did not, in fact, propose changes such as consolidating all the commissions into one commission, or telling the legislature how many sessional employees it could have or not have. Through you, Mr. Speaker, am I correct that the legislative budget is basically submitted by the legislature to OPM and comes back unchanged by OPM? Through you, Mr. Speaker?
Sorry, Representative O'Neal. Representative Merrill?
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Through you. With some exceptions, that's correct. There have been, for example, in this deficit mitigation plan, there were reductions to legislative management, but in the actual budget that the governor presents, you're right, usually, she would not propose, for example, consolidation of legislative agencies. I was speculating that there might be other agency consolidations proposed as part of the budget in February. Through you, Mr. Speaker.
Representative O'Neal?
Thank you, Mr. Speaker, and I appreciate that clarification, because certainly, I'm not sure that I want to invite the executive branch to begin telling legislative branch how many commissions it's going to have. Perhaps that would be a new and necessary thing in the difficult fiscal situation we face, but I had not understood, or that the system worked in that way, that we would invite the governor to consolidate the various commissions, or to tell the legislature how much money it could spend, basically, with respect to such things as staffing of the legislature. So it seems to me that the argument that we should vote against this amendment because we're going to await the governor's decisions or recommendations in the February budget address doesn't really apply to those portions, certainly of this amendment, that relate to the legislature itself. We are the ones who decide what the legislative budget is going to be, how many of the commissions there are going to be, what their staffing levels are going to be, and it's really something that traditionally, at least, the executive branch has not attempted to change once the legislative management and budget is sent over from here to the legislative, or rather, to the Office of Policy and Management. Now, I see the Chair of Appropriations on her feet, and I would ask one, I guess, sort of a follow-up question. Was it the intention of the Chair of Appropriations that the governor should make such consolidation-type recommendations with respect to the commissions that are mentioned in the amendment before us? Through you, Mr. Speaker.
Representative Merrill?
Thank you, Mr. Speaker, and thank you for having us clarify this. No, I certainly would not want to start a precedent where the governor would make suggestions through the budget as to what we should do with our legislative commissions. However, I would suggest that this idea may have merit, and I guess I'll offer a slightly different rationale for voting against this portion of the amendment, which is that these are really policy considerations beyond just the fiscal consideration of how much we could save by consolidating these agencies. I think we'd need to know a little more about exactly how those changes would impact the duties of those agencies and what was envisioned. As I said before, the idea very well has, may have merit for our coming discussions, but I would just submit that this is more of a policy discussion than simply a fiscal discussion, and I would defer it until a month and a half from now when we come back into regular session. Through you, Mr. Speaker.
Representative O'Neal?
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Well, unfortunately, one of the sad facts of dealing with a budget deficit of the magnitude that we are dealing with, and this is $600 million after the governor has done her rescissions that we are facing here today, tonight, is that at some point, we do start to have some sort of an impact on policy. We can't just keep reducing the number of employees without having an effect on policy. We can't really reduce the amount of money we spend at some point without having an impact on policy. And here, the policy that we're having an impact upon is one that's really designed for the benefit of the legislature. These commissions mainly exist for the purpose of providing advice and information to the legislature itself. I once served as the chairman of one of the legislative commissions, the Law Revision Commission, and our main function was to provide information and analysis of legislation to the benefit the legislature in deciding what to do about the things that we do. So I'm not sure that there's a huge policy issue that's involved in the creation or the existence of these commissions. They exist to serve the legislature, for the most part, and to provide us with information and advice, and so they don't actually go out and deliver services in any significant way to the general citizenry in the same way that the Department of Social Services or the Department of Developmental Services do. These agencies mainly deliver their services to us, just as much in many ways as our own staff does. So I think that we should be capable, without necessarily having to go through a lot of hearings and analysis, to decide how much advice we feel at this stage, with the budget being in the condition that it is, that we really should be spending money on to obtain in terms of the kind of advice that we've been getting from these commissions. I think that it is not going to change the policy, other than the amount of advice and information that we get with respect to the subjects that these commissions are charged with. But, Mr. Speaker, I really think that the original suggestion, which was that we should await the governor because her budget might contain this kind of consolidation language, that doesn't actually really work, and I think that in terms of, again, waiting six more weeks to start the process of doing some sort of evaluation that will culminate, perhaps, if we're lucky, with a new budget being passed in April or May, means that we're going to spend another six months spending the money on these commissions before we decide what we really need to do here in terms of trying to save the money. We really need to start saving money now, Mr. Speaker. It is an urgent situation, not just a big budget deficit, but it's also one that requires action now, and this is not a particularly severe kind of action to take, what's contained in this amendment. It primarily affects us in the legislature giving up some things that maybe we like, that may even be of benefit to us, but I think that when we're soon going to be asking the citizens of Connecticut to give up a very great deal, I think that we should start here today and tonight with this amendment, Mr. Speaker. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Can I mark further? If not, staff and guests, please come to the Wellhouse. Members, take your seat. The machine will be open.
The House of Representatives is voting by roll call. Members to the chamber. The House is voting House Amendment Schedule C by roll call. Members to the chamber.
Have all the members voted. Have all the members voted. All the members have voted? Please check the board, make sure. Have all the members voted? Please check the board and make sure your vote has been properly cast. If all the members have voted, the machine will be locked, and the clerk will take a tally. Clerk, please announce a tally.
On House Amendment Schedule C for House Bill 7601. House Amendment Schedule C for Bill 7601. Total number voting 141. Necessary for adoption 71. Those voting 841, those voting 899, absent, not voting 10.
Amendment fails. Karenamar further on the bill before us. Representative Cafero.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Ladies and gentlemen of the chamber, I have always respected Representative Merrill because whether or not we have disagreed on policy, she is a very candid and honest person, always has been, and she tells it like it is. And we did not disagree today as to the seriousness of this problem. We agree that we are $600 million plus in deficit. We agree that the bill before us only takes care of about $285 million of it. We agree that we still have a deficit in excess of $300 million. We agree that we have a deficit going forward in the billions and billions of dollars. That's where we are. We on this side of the aisle believe that we should do all we can, as quickly as we can, to mitigate this deficit. Because though deficit is a word, it affects people and it affects people's lives, and if we, as a state, don't get our fiscal house in order sooner rather than later, we could have more and more of a detrimental effect on the people who live in our state. But it is obvious even to me that this chamber has made a decision as to what will take place today. It is obvious to me that we, as a chamber, have decided we will do no more than that. We put forth a measure to cut our public campaign financing, and that was turned down. We put forth a measure to offer an early retirement plan as quickly as possible so we could achieve as much savings in this fiscal year, and that was turned down. We put forth a policy to consolidate agencies, to lead by example in giving up our, some of our benefits, and that was turned down. And what we keep hearing is, they're good ideas, they're things that would be considered, but we should wait till next year. And yet, we all know that because of the uniqueness of this crisis, the problem multiplies not just session to session, but month to month and week to week. People are losing their retirement and their jobs daily. But it is obvious that we have chosen, as a legislature, not to take any further action. In fact, even knowing that in the case of our own business, our legislative commissions, where only we can act, we can't even rely on the governor to act, we've chosen to take no action. So if we pass this bill today, we're going to go home. We're going to go home to our families for Thanksgiving and celebrate the Christmas or Hanukkah holidays and ring in the New Year without ever coming back and facing this problem. But the problem will continue to grow. And so, ladies and gentlemen, if we are not willing to handle this problem, the only responsible thing is to allow our governor to handle the problem while we are not in And therefore, Mr. Speaker, the clerk has amendment LCO 7062. May he call, and I be allowed to summarize?
Clerk, please call LCO number 7062, which would be Schedule, House Amendment Schedule D.
LCO number 7062, House D, offered by Representatives Cafero, Hamzeh, and Claritas.
Do Representative Speaker of the Chamber summarize amendment? Is there objection on summarization? If not, sir, you may proceed.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, very simply, the amendment before you, ladies and gentlemen, increases the governor's rescission power by doubling it. Currently, the governor has rescission power of up to 3% for any total appropriation from any fund, or more than 5% of any appropriation. What we're doing is taking that 3% and 5% and doubling it to 6% and 10%, and I move adoption.
As question, chamber is adoption of House Amendment Schedule D. Will you remark on the amendment, sir?
I will. Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Ladies and gentlemen, you might recall back in May, back in May, when many of us said, we know we have a problem, but we're going to adjourn our regular session. And when people asked, what are we going to do about the growing deficit? The leadership of this General Assembly said, well, the governor has rescission powers, and we encourage her to use it. Well, the governor was forced to use that rescission power. But that's just about up now. We've reached the limit. And we, as a legislature, have made the statement today that we choose to do no more than what we're doing today, which is not even address 50% of the deficit. And yet, we have the rest of this month, we have the month of December, and the first seven days of January before the legislature reconvenes. And a lot can happen in that time, as we learn every single day. And if we are not willing to do what we were elected to do, someone has to do it. And I propose we increase the power of rescission to our governor by this amendment. And I would ask, Mr. Speaker, then, when the vote be taken, it be taken by roll?
Question, chamber is on roll call. Voters on favorable roll call vote, please. Sing aye?
Aye!
20% has been met. When the vote is taken, it will be taken by roll. Karenamar further on the amendment for us. Representative Merrill.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. A question, if you would, through you.
Please frame a question, madam. Please.
Thank you.
Proceed.
Representative Cafero. As I'm reading this, you're proposing in line 30 that the ability of the governor to cut from, let's say, any one fund, for example, the general fund, is currently 3% of the total appropriation. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Representative Cafero. Quicker than I could.
Through you, Mr. Speaker. That is correct. I apologize.
Okay, that's okay. Representative Merrill.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. And through you, at this point, if the governor used her existing rescission power, what amount would she be able to cut from the general fund right now with the existing power? Through you, Mr. Speaker.
Representative Cafero.
Through you, Mr. Speaker. I have absolutely no clue.
Representative Merrill.
Thank you. Well, I guess, as we said before, math not being the strong suit here. Through you, by my calculation, I would say that the existing general fund is approximately $18 billion. So if the governor were to exercise her existing power, she would be able to cut 3% of that, which would be approximately $500 million? Through you, Mr. Speaker. Is that approximately correct?
Representative Cafero.
Well, through you, Mr. Speaker, and math might not be my strong suit, but I know a little bit about what you can and cannot cut. And as you know better than I, through you, Mr. Speaker, Representative Merrill, there are certain federal mandates, there are certain federal lawsuits that have taken place, there are certain collective bargaining contracts that would minimize the amount that she would even be able to rescind, and therefore, she would not be able to cut every appropriation or 3% across the board of 18. It certainly minimizes the total amount that she would, in actuality, be able to cut, I would presume, if that's what you meant. I'm not sure. Through you, Mr. Speaker.
Representative Merrill.
Through you, Mr. Speaker. My understanding of the governor's ability at this point is that she would be able to cut up to the total amount of 3% of any one fund, and that would not exempt agencies. The amount itself is absolute, is my understanding, but I could be incorrect about that. I don't think I am. I guess my point, I'll continue and just, the point I am about to make is that I believe that we should allow the governor to use the power she already has to rescind up to the 3% of any one fund or 5% of any one appropriation before we would grant additional powers in the first place. So I guess I would speak in opposition to the amendment in the sense that we are going to be coming into session approximately a month and a half from now, and at that time, we'll be able to look at the new budget. But until that time, I believe she still has current ability to rescind additional amounts of money up to the amount that we may still be in deficit. And of course, that number will continue to evolve, as we all know. So I would argue that we should probably not be granting these powers before they're actually needed in any event. I would also argue against extending the power in any event. I think 3% is already quite a large amount of any total appropriation to any one fund. And so we would be able to mitigate this deficit when we come back into regular session. Through you, Mr. Speaker. Thank you.
Representative Cafero.
Mr. Speaker, I guess all I would say is that we have an $18 billion budget, and we are, on average, in deficit going forward, about $3.3 billion in each of the next two or three fiscal years. If we are not willing to make some of the cuts, I think the governor should be charged with not only making the rescissions as currently in statute she may make, but going beyond that, because our deficit goes beyond, I think, anything we ever anticipated. And we have a month, and in fact, what I'm really scared about is that just from last month to this month, our deficit doubled from $300 million to $600 million. What's going to happen in December and January before we even get back in as a new legislature? Those are the serious decisions that someone has to make. And once again, if we're not going to be here to make them, we should give the authority to the governor to do so. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you. Karenamar further. If not, staff and guests, please come to the House. Members, take your seat. Machine will be open.
The House of Representatives is voting by roll call. Members to the chamber. The House is voting House Amendment Schedule D by roll call.
Have all the members voted. Have all the members voted. If all the members have voted, please check the board and make sure your vote has been properly cast. If all the members have voted, the machine will be locked. And the clerk will take a tally. Clerk, please announce tally.
House Amendment Schedule D for Bill 7601. Total number voting 141. Necessary for adoption 71. Those voting 842, those voting 898, absent, not voting 10.
Amendment fails. Will you remark further? Will you remark further? Representative Donovan.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, members of the chamber, I rise to support the legislation before us. Certainly, we know that we face some very significant challenges in terms of our economy. For the last four years, we've done the right thing. We've passed balanced budgets, we've added money to help our cities and towns, we've expanded health care, we've helped children and seniors, and we've had surpluses, which we wisely put into the rainy day fund, at now $1.4 billion. Independent of us, there was changes, a crisis on Wall Street that has affected not only our state, but the nation and the world as a whole, and we have to deal with those changes. And we will. And the process we take, we deal with it, is a responsible, rational approach. The governor had put this proposal before us and said, General Assembly, I call you into special session. Here are the issues which we need to work on. And we studied her proposals, we had hearings, and we worked with those proposals, and about 95% of it has covered the savings within the bill before us. Is this going to solve all the problems, Mr. Speaker, at this point? No, it won't, but it is a good first step. And it's a first step that is based on rational and responsible work. We will be working together. We have a bipartisan appropriations committee, bipartisan finance committee, that will study all the aspects of our budget and determine what to do. We have signals from Washington that there's help on the way, not only in direct relief, but also relief in terms of infrastructure and other projects. We will work together, and we'll try to find out what's going on. Who can predict, in this economy, what will happen next? Just a few months ago, there were proposals to reduce revenue, such as the gas tax. Gas was $4.50. I paid $1.92, and I hear other places it's much lower. Same gas tax, but a significant change in our energy cost. Energy costs, which is actually, may help our economy because it enables businesses and individuals to pay less for our energy. So we need to get regular information, which means doing hard work. It's all of us sitting down, getting the information, representing the people who sent us here, and saying, we're not just going to look for something that looks flashy, but we're going to study the issue, we're going to get the information, and make wise decisions. Wise decisions. That's what we've done for four years, and there's nothing, nothing that I see about this group that doesn't lead me to believe that that's what we're going to do in the weeks and months ahead. We've heard from the public, they want us to do something, and we will. We've also heard from the public that there are changes that happen in our country and state. We will deal with that, too. We want to hear from the public. What do they think are the priorities of our state? And we will listen to them and craft the needed changes in our state so that they can be proud of what we stand for and we represent them. So, Mr. Speaker, this is a good first step. We worked in cooperation with the governor, we spent time studying it, but there's much more to work to be done, and all good ideas will be welcome in the months and weeks ahead. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you, sir. Staff and guests, please come to the House. Members, take your seats. Machine will be open.
The House of Representatives is voting by roll call. Members to the chamber. The House is voting by roll call.
Have all the members voted. Have all, have all the members voted. If all the members have voted, please check the board and make sure your vote has been properly cast. properly cast. Please check the board. Make sure your vote's properly cast. If all the members have voted, the machine will be locked. And the clerk will take a tally. Clerk, please announce a tally.
Bill 7601, total number voting 143, necessary for passage, 72, those voting 841, those voting 81, absent, not voting 8.
The veil passes. Representative Donovan.
Mr. Speaker, I move immediate transmittal last item to the Senate for further action.
Transmittal is your objection. If not, so ordered, sir. Clerk, please call Senate Bill 1200.
Senate Bill 1200, an act concerning various measures to provide relief for municipalities, LCO number 7040, introduced by Senator Williams and Representative Amen.
Representative.